Note that we will be recording this hearing. This hearing is for the renewal of the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Discharge of Surface Water, Combined Sewer Overflow Permits for Bergen County Utilities Authority, the Borough of Fort Lee, the City of Hackensack, and the Village of Ridgefield Park. We often use the term, the acronym NIGPTIS, in referring to the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Program. My name is Joe Manick. I am the Hearing Officer and I am the Section Chief in the Bureau of Surface Water and Pre-Treatment Permitting within the Division of Water Quality at the Department of Environmental Protection, otherwise referred to as the Department or NJDEP. Jonathan Hanischek is within our bureau and he will be providing instructions on how to provide testimony today. Josie Castaldo is the Case Manager for the BCUA permit, while Bennett Moss, Jonathan Hanischek, and Marcelo Gracia are Case Managers for the Borough of Fort Lee, the City of Hackensack, and the Village of Ridgefield Park respectively. Marcelo Gracia will provide an overview of the subject permits. Also here today are many of NJDEP's staff, including Susan Rosenwinkel, Assistant Director to the Division of Water Quality, and others who are part of the CSO program or part of other NJDEP programs. I will now be providing some general information about the public hearing process, which will take about four minutes. Daisy DePaus, also of the Division of Water Quality, will then present this information in Spanish. We will then provide an overview of Microsoft Teams and a short summary of the permits in English and then in Spanish. This introductory information should take about 20 minutes in total. As established in the NIGPTIS regulations of the New Jersey Administrative Code at 7:14A/15, this is a non-adversarial public hearing, which means that the department is here to listen and take testimony as part of our regulatory process. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the interested public, including the affected communities, with an opportunity to be heard on these proposed draft permit actions. The department will be accepting verbal and written statements today. Please note that verbal and written statements have equal weight, so if someone is not comfortable speaking and just has a written statement prepared, they can submit it electronically, where it will receive equal weight with verbal testimony. The email address for written comments is dwq_bswp@dep nj.gov. We will now add that address to the chat. The purpose of this hearing is to receive your comments and concerns. The department will respond to all significant and relevant comments, both verbal and written, in a response to comments document, which will be issued... Excuse me. Which... Pardon me. The purpose of this hearing is to receive your comments and concerns. The department will respond to all significant and relevant comments, both verbal and written, in a response to comment document, which will be issued as part of the final NIGPTIS permit decisions. The permatees and each person... Excuse me. The permatee and each person who has submitted comments will receive an electronic copy of the final decision document, provided you give us your email address. We will also provide a copy to anyone else who requests it, whether or not you submitted comments. Please be sure to leave your email address in the chat or send it to dwq_bswp@dep nj.gov if you want to receive a copy. Please note that the public comment period will end at 11:59 PM on November 13, 2023. If you would like to provide verbal comments today, please put your name, organization, and email address in the chat, and I will call your name when it is your turn. When I call you, please clearly state and spell your first name and last name for the record. We will have a court reporter assigned to transcribe the recorded testimony. If speakers are speaking on behalf of a particular organization, we ask that you identify that organization. We want to hear from everybody and we want to give everybody here an opportunity to speak. In view of time limitations, I am asking each speaker to limit their testimony to five minutes. Individual speakers may only testify until we hear from every person who is here and wishes to give testimony. Well, testify once until we hear from every person who is here and wishes to give testimony. If time permits and there is an opportunity at the end of the hearing and a person wants to testify for a second time, we will do our best to accommodate you. We are asking that all speakers and members of the audience respect the right of each person to be heard and refrain from any behavior that could interfere with the presentation of testimony. This hearing will close at the end of testimony or at noon, whichever occurs first. The same information I just read now will be read in Spanish by one of our staff, Daisy DePaus. After that, we will turn the discussion over to Jonathan Hanischek, who will provide an overview of Microsoft Teams. After that, Marcelo Gracia will then give some factual information about the NIGPTIS permits. Daisy?
Hola. Abreré esta audiencia en este momento. Deja que el registro muestra que la hora es diez y diez y la audiencia pública está oficialmente abierta. Tenga en cuenta que grabaremos esta audiencia. Esta audiencia se lleva a cabo de la renovación de los permisos de descarga de aguas superficiales, desabordamientos del cantío combinado de sistemas de eliminación, de descargas de contaminaciones de Nueva Jersey, para la autoridad de servicios públicos del Condado de Bergen, en municipalidad de Fort Lee, la ciudad de Hackensack, y el Republico de Ridgefield Park. Al menudo usamos el lacrinoño NIGPTIS cuando nos referimos al programa de sistema de eliminación de descarga de contaminaciones de Nueva Jersey. Mi nombre es Joe Manick, suele oficial de la audiencia pública y el jefe de la sesión de la oficina de permiso de agua superficial y prepaymentos de la división de alcaldía de aguas en el departamento de protección ambiente. También del menudo del departamento unegipto NJDEP. Jonathan Hanischek está durante nuestra oficina y breve instrucciones sobre cómo de dar testimonio hoy. Josie Castillo es la administradora de casos para los permisos BCUA, mientras que Bennett Moss, Jonathan Hanischek, y Marcelo Gracia son los administradores de casos para municipalidad de Fort Lee, la ciudad de Hackensack, y el Republico de Ridgefield Park respectamente. Marcelo Gracia aprendida una versión general de los permisos en cuestión. También hay aquí muchos empleados de NJDEP, incluyendo a Susan Rosenwinkel, superante de la división de alcaldía de agua y otros personas que son parte de la programa CSO o de nuestros programas NJDEP. Ahora proporcionamos información general sobre el proceso de la audiencia pública. Yo les llamaré cuando no es... Lo que tomaría cuatro minutos. Yo Daisy DePaus también de la división de alcaldía de agua presentará esta información en español. A continuación proporcionamos una descripción general de Microsoft Teams y resumen breve los permisos en inglés y luego en español. Esta información tomará unos 20 minutos en total. Cómo se estabilizan las regulaciones de NIGPTIS con cuidado administraciones de Nueva Jersey en 714A subtitípico 15. Esta es una audiencia pública no contestacional. Lo cual significa que el departamento está aquí para escuchar y tomar testimonio como parte de nuestros procesos regulatorios. El propósito de esta audiencia es proporcionar al público interesado, incluye las comunidades afectadas, las oportunidades de ser escuchados con respecto a estas actividades de los bordades de permisos propuestos. El departamento aceptará declaraciones verbal y escritas del día de hoy. Tengan que... Tengan que cuenta que las... De la declaración por escrito y las verbales tengan las mismas importancias. Sea aquí, sea que no... Excuse me. Así que si alguien no se siente cómodo hablar y solamente tienen una declaración escrita preparada, puede enviarla electrónicamente, y si le deben, dera la misma importancia que el testimonio verbal. El correo electrónico para esta comentario por escrito es dwq/sbswpatp.nj.gov. Ahora, under the mission is el correo en el chat. El propósito de esta audiencia es... La importancia de esta audiencia es escribir sus comentarios y preocupaciones del departamento, responder a todos los comentarios significados y revelantes, tanto verbales como escritos. En un documento de después a comentarios se reproquita, se publican como parte de las decisiones finales sobre los permisos de NIGPTIS. Los permisos y todas las personas que hay representado comentarios recibieran una copia electrónicamente del documento con la declaración final, siempre que nos ha indicado su correo electrónico. También sufristamos unas copias aquí sola... Aquí las solicitan. ¿A quién lo solicitan? Algunos no hay enviento comentarios. Se ingresa su... Deja su correo electrónico en el chat... Si quieren recibir una copia. Tengan su cuenta del periodo para enviar comentarios públicos hasta el 13 de noviembre de 2003 a las 11:59 PM. Si dejan representar comentarios públicos de la manera verbal hoy, escriban su nombre, organización, y correo de electrónico en el chat, y los enviaremos su nombre y les llamaremos su nombre cuando sea su turno. Cuando los llamaremos, digan y deletren su nombre y apellido con clara para el registro. Tenemos un catafótico justial asigno para escribir el testimonio grabado. Si alguien habla en representación de una agresión, de una organización, le pedimos que identifica esta organización. Queremos escuchar a todos y dejarlos una oportunidad de hablar aquí. Del tiempo limitado, les pido que su testamento no exida los cuatro minutos. Cada uno solamente puede hablar una vez hasta que todas las personas que tienen aquí y desean ser turnados. En caso que el permiso, el tiempo lo permita y sea posible hacer el final, la final de la audiencia, si una persona declara por segunda vez, haremos todo lo posible para emitirlo. Pedimos que todos lo que hay y los miembros de la audiencia respeten el derecho de cada persona represente, hace escuchada y deventen las conductas que puedan interferir con esta impretesesión del testimonio. Esta audiencia terminará cuando concluyamos los testimonios al mediodía, lo que ocurra primero. Después le daremos la palabra a Jonathan Hackensack para repensar, representar una descripción general de Microsoft. A continuación, Marcelo Gracia para información factual sobre los permisos en NIGPTIS.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Hanischek and I will be speaking to you about commenting during the public hearing. In order to inform the NJDEP Hearing Officer of your interest in submitting verbal testimony, move your cursor around to open the Teams meeting toolbar, which will appear near the bottom center of your screen. Click on the chat icon to open the meeting chat box on the side of the screen. Type your name, organization, and email address in the "Type a new message" field at the bottom of the meeting chat box. When entering this information, use the following format: First name, last name, organization, and email address. See below for an example. Click the "Send" icon or press Enter on your keyboard to submit your message and notify the NJDEP Hearing Officer of your interest in submitting verbal testimony. To unmute or mute your microphone, toggle your microphone icon. To disable or enable your camera, toggle your camera icon. If you are using a phone, you can hit *6 to mute and unmute. The same information I just read will now be read in Spanish by Daisy DePaus. After that, Marcelo Gracia will provide an overview of permits that were issued.
Hola, mi nombre es Jonathan Hackenek y les estoy hablando sobre cómo comentar durante la presentación. Para información a la oficial de audiencia pública de NIGPTIS sobre su interés de dar un testimonio verbal, mueva su cruzar para la pared, la barra de herramientas de reuniones de Teams en la pantalla inferior de su pantalla. Haga un clic en el icon de chat para abrir el chat, el meeting chat. Un lado de su pantalla, escriba su nombre completo y nombre de la agresión que representa y su correo electrónico en el campo que dice "Type new message", escriba un nuevo, un mensaje nuevo. En la parte inferior del meeting chat. Cuando escriba esa información, usa el formato nombre, apellido, organización, y correo de electrónico. Y ve al ejemplo abajo. Haga un clic en el icon o presente la tecla Enter en su... Para mandar, enviar su mensaje y notificar el oficial de la audiencia pública sobre su interés de dar un testimonio verbal. Para actividad, para actividad o silenciar el micrófono, activa el icon del micrófono. Para desactivar o activar la cámara, activar el icon de la cámara. Si ha conectado por teléfono, para activar o silenciar su micrófono, por favor oprima el extinto 6. Después, Marcelo Gracia representerá un resumen de los permisos en... Los permisos que se hay en cuestión.
Hello, my name is Marcelo Gracia of the Bureau of Surface Water and Pre-Treatment Permitting, and I am the Case Manager for the Village of Ridgefield Park CSO Permit. I'd like to give you some background on the subject of today's hearing. The renewal of the NJNIGPTIS permit for the Bergen County Utilities Authority, Permit Number NJ0020028, where a draft permit was issued on September 7, 2023. And the renewal of the NIGPTIS CSO permits for the Borough of Fort Lee, Permit Number NJ0034517, the City of Hackensack Permit, Permit Number NJ0108766, and the Village of Ridgefield Park, Permit Number NJ0109118. With address, draft permits were issued on August 17, 2023. All permits are posted on the NJDEP's Division of Water Quality CSO website. As stated in the draft permits, the comment period will end at 11:59 PM on November 13, 2023, in accordance with NJAC 714A 1510 and 1514. The individual NJPDS CSO permits for the Combined Sewer System of Fort Lee, Hackensack, and Ridgefield Park are hydraulically connected to the Bergen County Utilities Authority abbreviated to BCUA, Water Pollution Control Facility. Combined sewer flows or CSOs are discharges from combined sewer systems. Combined sewer systems are sewers that were designed many decades ago to collect rainwater and snowmelt runoff, domestic sewage, and industrial wastewater in the same pipe. Combined sewer systems are all still present in certain older cities in the state. BCUA owns and operates a wastewater treatment plan named Little Ferry Water Pollution Control Facility. The facility treats wastewater collected in 135 square mile service area in New Jersey, which includes the Borough of Fort Lee, City of Hackensack, and the Village of Ridgefield Park as customer communities. BCUA does not operate any CSO outfalls. BCUA, the Borough of Fort Lee, City of Hackensack, and the Village of Ridgefield Park own separate portions of one hydraulically connected combined sewer system. Fort Lee, Hackensack, and Ridgefield Park do not own or operate any wastewater treatment facilities. Dry weather wastewater flows from Fort Lee, Hackensack, and Ridgefield Park are conveyed to the BCUA wastewater system treatment facility. When the conveyance capacity of the collection system and/or the wastewater treatment facility is succeeded, excess combined sewage flows pass through CSO outfalls. In Fort Lee, two CSO outfalls discharge combined sewage into the Hudson River, which is classified as saline SUE 2 Category 2 waters. In Hackensack, two CSO outfalls discharge combined sewage into the Hackensack River, which is classified as saline SUE 1 Category 2 waters. In Ridgefield Park, six CSO outfalls discharge combined sewage into the Hackensack River, which is classified as saline SUE 1 Category 2 waters, and the Overpeck Creek, which is classified as saline SUE 2 Category 2. These classifications are dictated by the NJDEP's Surface Water Quality Standards. To comply with federal and state CSO regulations, the Village of Ridgefield Park, the Borough of Fort Lee, the City of Hackensack, and the BCUA have committed to meet the requirements of the pre-sorption approach, which requires elimination or capture of a minimum 85% of the annual average combined sewage collected in the system during wet weather. Presently, Fort Lee's system is at 76.4% capture, Hackensack's system is at 68.5% capture, and Ridgefield Park's system is at 75.4% capture. The projects, which include both gray and green infrastructure, are projected to achieve 85.4% capture for Fort Lee, 86.8% capture for Hackensack, and 85.6% capture for Ridgefield Park. Each municipality will incorporate CSO control strategies to achieve a minimum wet weather percent capture value within its own municipal border without CSO-related projects being done by BCUA at this time. The three municipalities we pursue in sewer separation at this time, which is expected to result in an overall reduction in combined sewage flow to BCUA over time, as specified in the LTP. Additional projects as part of the LTP include, but are not limited to, select sewer separation, a stormwater infrastructure project, proposed CSO storage tanks, and green infrastructure. Some of these projects will also help address localized flooding. As per the long-term control plan and projected NJPDS permit requirements, these projects are projected to be completed over multiple NJPDS permit cycles. This information I just read now will be read in Spanish by Daisy DePaus. After that, we will return to Joe Manick and begin taking testimony.
Hola, mi nombre es Marcelo Gracia de la Oficina de Permiso de Agua de Superficiales y Pretamento, y soy administradora de los casos de permisos CSO del Republico de Ridgefield Park. Les quiero compartir algo de información del fondo sobre el tema de la audiencia de hoy. La renovación de los permisos de NIGPTIS para el permiso número NJ0020028 de la Autoridad de Servicios Públicos del Condado de Bergen, donde el bordador de los permisos se obtome el 7 de septiembre de 2023. La renovación de los permisos de NIGPTIS SEO para los permisos número NJ0034517 del Municipalidad de Fort Lee, el permiso número NJ0108766 del Condado de Hackensack, y el permiso número NJ0109118 del permiso del Republico de Ridgefield Park, donde se emiten los permisos preliminarios del 17 de agosto de 2023. Todos los permisos están publicados en el sitio web de CSO, de la División de Calidad de Agua de NIGPTIS. Como se indica en los bordados de los permisos, el periodo de comentario terminará el 13 de noviembre de 2023 a las 11:59 PM. De cargo de los artículos 714A, 7.10, y 15.14 del Código Administrativo de Nueva Jersey, los permisos individuales de superficie del Nueva Jersey para los sistemas de alcantarillos combinados de Fort Lee, Hackensack, y Ridgefield Park están drudicalmente conectados a la instalación de control de la contaminación de agua de la Autoridad de Servicios Públicos del Condado de Bergen. Habría viado como BCUA, dos desabornimientos del cantío combinados o CSO son descargadas de sistemas de alcantarillo combinado. Los sistemas de alcantarillo combinado son alcantarillas de... De... Descana... I'm sorry. Los sistemas de alcantarillo combinado, de alcantillos que se destalian hace décadas para recolectar las aguas de lluvia y desecho. Aguas residentales domésticas y aguas residenciales industriales en la misma tubería. Dos semestres de alcantarillos combinados todavía están presente algunas ciudades más antiguas en el estado. BCUA posee y operan unas plantas de tratamiento de agua residenciales llamadas instalaciones de control de las contaminaciones de aguas de Little Ferry. Las instalaciones tratan las aguas residenciales recolectivas en una área de servicio de 130 miles cuadradas en Nueva Jersey, que incluye la municipalidad de Fort Lee, la ciudad de Hackensack, y el Republico de Ridgefield Park como comunidades de clientes. BCUA no puede ni operan algunas marisos de CSO. BCUA, en municipalidad de Fort Lee y la ciudad de Hackensack y el Republico de Ridgefield Park, poseen partes separadas de un sistema de alcantarillo combinado conectada drudicalmente. Ni Fort Lee, ni Hackensack, ni Ridgefield Park posecen ni operan algunas instalaciones de tratamiento de agua residenciales. Los fluyos de agua residentiales durante tiempos secos de Fort Lee, Hackensack, y Ridgefield Parks son temperadas de la planta de tratamiento de aguas residenciales de BCUA. Cuando se exida la capacidad de transporte del sistema de reglación o la planta de tratamiento de aguas residenciales, el exijo de agua residentales combinada pasa a través de los mismores de las OSEO. En Fort Lee, dos... En Fort Lee, dos marisos de SEO descargan aguas residenciales combinadas en el río Hudson, que está clasificado como aguas costaría de dos de ministreo salino dos. En Hackensack, dos administrarios de SEO descargan aguas residenciales combinadas en el río Hackensack, está clasificado como aguas de captoria dos, el estrenario salano uno. En Ridgefield Parks, seis administradores de SEO descargan aguas residenciales combinadas en el río Hackensack y está clasificado como aguas de estriños salano uno categoría dos. El río Overpeck está clasificando como extrayuno saliano dos categoría dos. Está clasificado, están directados por los estados de calidad del agua superficial de NIGPTIS. Para como las regulaciones estadales y federales de SEO, el Republico de Ridgefield Park, el Municipalidad de Fort Lee, la ciudad de Hackensack, y la BCUA se han comprometido a cumplir los requisitos de enfoque de... a cumplir los requisitos de enfoque de prescripción que exige la dimensión o la capacidad de un mínimo de ochenta y cinco del pedido anuales de aguas residenciales combinadas recolectadas en la sistema durante el clima húmedo. Acualmente, la sistema Fort Lee está a uno setenta y seis punto cuatro de captura el semestre. En Hackensack está en sesenta y ocho punto cinco de captura. Y sistemas de Ridgefield Park está a un setenta y cinco punto cuatro de captura. Se proyecta que los proyectos que incluyen infractaciones grises o verdes lograrán una captura de ocho punto cuatro para Fort Lee, una captura de ochenta y cinco punto ocho para Hackensack, y una captura de ochenta y cinco punto seis por ciento para Ridgefield Park. Cada municipado incorpora estrategias de control de la O S C para lograr una ver mínimo de captura profissional de clima húmedo dentro de su prora frontal municipal si VCUA está realizado proyectos anituales con los O S C S Os en este momento. Los tres municipados buscan las separaciones de cantillos en este momento. Lo que se espera que resultaron en una relación en general en los fluyos combinados de agua residenciales a VCUA a lo largo de tiempo. Como se especifien, como se especifica en el LTCP. Proyectos adicionales, como se parte el Plan de Control al Agapaso incluye, pero no se limitan en la separación de selectos encandidados, control de aguas brutales, un programa pilito violeto de infractaciones verdes, una nueva sesión de bombillo durante tiempos lluviosos, una nueva planta de tratamientos de CSO, munificaciones y redutorios de mejores de la interacción para transporte adicional. A luego de esto, proyectamos también, ayudamos con los inducciones localizados. Siguen el Plan de Control al Agapaso los requisitos propusiones de los permisos en Egyptis. Se prueben finales estos proyectos adante veces ciclos, varios ciclos de permisos de Egyptis. Después volvamos con Joe Manick y empezamos a tomar testimonios.
Okay, thank you Daisy, John, and Marcela, appreciate that. I'm looking in the chat and I don't see any names of anyone who would like to provide testimony right now. Oh, I do see someone. All right, Suzanne Atman, if you'd like to start, are you ready?
Hi, Joe, sure. Hi Suzanne Atman, representing the advisory board of Sewer Free Streets and Rivers Campaign. Thanks again to the NJDP for all of your hard work, working with the permit holders to release these draft permits. Much appreciated. I'm going to just share some things that have been shared in past testimony as well as some new things. One just overall question is we were wondering when the final North Hudson Sewer Authority permit will be released. Not sure you can answer that today, but just wanted to put that question out there. So in terms of public engagement, as you know, we appreciate the public engagement process that you're designing with the permit holders to educate the public about the status of the program, document progress in implementing the program, inform neighborhood residents before, during, and after construction. And as we've mentioned before, as specific and clear and as you can all be in terms of what those requirements versus nice to haves are, that's going to be critical. And thank you for developing the Public Engagement Guidance Document, which will be critical for the communities to engage the public. As I know it's still in draft form, but we would love to, again, be able to weigh in before it's final final, if that's possible. We also just two things that were mentioned, I think, before, but want to mention again. It's not quite clear how a community member will know when these CSO supplemental teams, when they're being formed, how and when does the process initiate? Will NJDP be involved in ensuring accountability for those kickoffs? We'd love to support communities around that, so it'd be important to know. And also, I think we mentioned this earlier, just not sure if there's a way to consider changing the name from CSO supplemental teams to something a little more conducive, a little more accessible for the community, so they know really what they're participating on. Might attract, you know, it might help with engagement. Regarding meetings, the permit provides, permittees the options to hold meetings outside of the implementation schedule, which is great. However, permit holders may be less likely to hold meetings when no work is being implemented. So we recommend including a minimum of one CSO supplemental team meeting per year outside of implementation meetings. That way you can ensure that members stay active, they're engaged with the permit holder throughout the life cycle of the LTCP. And these could be an opportunity to review annual reports and updates. So a suggestion for that request. Given that important decisions will be made in these teams, we're still concerned that the public may be underrepresented on those teams since there's no specific requirement for how many community members should participate, nor necessarily who they should represent. So again, we highly encourage NJDP to require a certain percentage of teams consist of community representatives, and that a certain percentage must be at a given meeting to ensure everyone's informed of decisions and participating in that. And since many of these teams are regional versus city-specific, we highly encourage that members represent the specific municipalities included in that regional permit. And that at least one of the community members represents a municipality, representing a municipality, be present at every meeting, again, so there's clear engagement in every community. In terms of, we were pleased for these permits to see that the permit holders are investing a significant amount of construction and design activities. It was a bit disappointing to see that the timelines are still so extended in many cases. In terms of Fort Lee, the plan gets to about eighty-one percent capture in ten years through sewer separation, which is good, but it takes until the year 2049 to be completed, which is, in our opinion, too long. In Hackensack, the plan is to achieve eighty-one point two percent capture by 2025, which is good. However, full implementation is by 2036 or 2038. So depending on performance obtained by prior projects. Again, that is a very, very long timeline, and we're hoping that before these permits are finalized, you can work with the permit holders to adjust that. And hoping that by looking at new funding opportunities that have arrived or been shared, been released since the LTCPs were drafted, that will allow you all to go back to shortening these timelines or finding ways to invest. While there is mapping of systems and inspections related to broken pipes and leaks, as well as programs such as HEPS Environmental Monitoring Program, it's not clear how the findings are enforced. So we encourage NJDP to establish guidelines and procedures to enforce those findings. Just circling back quickly to funding, since it's so critical to these projects. We appreciate your requirement that a financial capability analysis be conducted. Again, we're concerned that innovative funding mechanisms are not necessarily being fully considered and taken advantage of at present. Again, especially with the recent federal funding. The impacts of this, as we all know, include delayed timelines, increases in rates to ratepayers, especially in overburdened communities, and a risk to project completion. In the long term, moreover, with such a long timeframe, there's going to be a risk of higher construction costs or future political administrations renegotiating requirements increases. So knowing this, how can NJDP actively encourage and help permit holders to take advantage of this and other innovative financing beyond what you're already doing? How can there be a real push around that? And just on a related note, we recommend including water bank funding in the affordability calculation. And the permit holders should include the impact on affordability and corresponding timeframe that implementation of an equitable stormwater fee would have. Can that be included, can that be required as steps for the permit holders? And then finally, permittees sometimes seek to use cost as a rationale for extending implementation timelines. This, of course, leaves communities with, right, the extended burden of environmental and public health issues. So can we require them to conduct a more thorough review of funding alternatives to see if they can reduce these burdens? And a lot of this is laid out in the EPA's 2023 Clean Water Act Financial Capability Assessment Guidance. And we encourage permit holders to follow this guidance, which shows them how to limit the impacts of these longer schedules while minimizing the financial impacts on lower-income households. All right, that's all for now. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. The next person I see in the chat is Patricia Dunkack. Again, if you'd like to provide testimony, please put your name, your organization, and your email address in the chat, and we'll get to you in the order that it's submitted. Patricia, go right ahead.
Hi, thank you. Good morning. This is Patricia Dunkack with New Jersey Future. First off, I just want to say thank you to the department for the opportunity to provide comments during today's public hearing. And also, I just want to thank you for all the hard work that has gone into drafting these permits. New Jersey Future supports requirements to reduce combined sewer discharges that will improve water quality and reduce flooding issues in New Jersey. Here are some of our recommendations and questions for these permits. We will also be submitting more formal written comments in November. So regarding green infrastructure, we believe that CSO control alternatives, including green infrastructure, are important components in achieving eighty-five percent capture of combined sewage collected during wet weather events. We ask the department provide additional guidance for permittees to ensure the high-impact green infrastructure is considered as part of gray infrastructure projects to address both solutions simultaneously. For example, green infrastructure should be explored during the sewer separation projects included in these permits. We also ask that the DEP provide assistance for permittees to explore conducting a green infrastructure feasibility study to determine locations with a large volume of impervious cover that would benefit from the implementation of green infrastructure that will address localized flooding issues. Regarding climate change, following the implementation and the adoption of the inland flood protection rules and the anticipated release of the draft Resilient Environments and Landscapes Rule, how will NJPACT be incorporated into this permit and future permits as well? And how will the permittees be required to adjust their current five-year plan to include the new precipitation models and projections involved in these new rules? And I just want to echo Suzanne's comments regarding funding and affordability. We hope that innovative funding opportunities will shorten timelines, ensure affordability to ratepayers, and will reduce the timeline that the community faces environmental and public health issues that are related to CSO discharges. Thank you again for drafting these permits and for holding this public hearing. Like I mentioned before, we'll be submitting more detailed written comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, Michelle Langa, you have the floor.
Hi, good morning. Thank you. And thank you, DEP, for putting this together and for hearing our comments. Just going to sort of pick up a little bit where Suzanne left off, some of the shared comments that we have as a group. I am Michelle Langa with Hackensack Riverkeeper. I also sit on Sewer Free Streets and Rivers and the Jersey Waterworks CSO Committee. So a lot of our comments are duplicative. So speaking to climate change and the models used, we're still seeing a little bit less clarity in the language in the permits about how CSO controls address climate change and sea level rise. So if possible, we'd like to see just a little bit of more clear language in that. We know not all of the NJPACT rules have been released yet, but it is an important part of what we're dealing with, particularly in the Hackensack River Meadowlands area. So we're hoping the permittees will be able to review projected CSO removals and whether current projections of precipitation and sea level rise due to climate change will affect their implementation plans and adjust accordingly, if it would make sense to do so. Just down a little bit. We also want to just call out some really positive stuff. It's really great to see that Ridgefield Park is using EPA's CREATE tool for assessing climate resiliency. It's really important to be thinking forward like that, and we would hope that all permit holders would be encouraged to do so as well. Speaking to construction operation and maintenance, we would request that DEP develop clear and specific inspecting, monitoring, and enforcement procedures to ensure the permittee complies with system cleaning program for both gray and green infrastructure projects. And a question related to that is what will the enforcement mechanism to ensure that the permittee implements the system cleaning program be? How will that be addressed, and how will deficiencies and performance factors be communicated to the public? Believe that was all that I wanted to add for now. But just on behalf of Hackensack Riverkeeper, the river, we all believe, is a very valued resource by the community. So anything that can be done to make CSOs less of an issue faster is really the goal for us. We have a lot of folks who recreate on the river and want to make it safe for them faster than later. Thank you all.
Oh, my apologies. Thank you. And next up, I have Amy Goldsmith.
Yes, thank you. My name is Amy Goldsmith. I'm the New Jersey State Director for Clean Water Action. We were founded fifty years ago as our founding director helped write and pass the original Clean Water Act. So that's in part why we're sitting here today. And part of the Clean Water Act, as you know, is to get to zero discharge. And we haven't gotten there yet, but this is clearly one way to move us forward in that direction. We have many members in Bergen County and in the communities that are part of this permit process. So I just wanted to also indicate that as well. Some of my comments are new and some are really reinforcing some of the other comments that were made, so I'll be quick. As has already been discussed, the timeline in some cases is too long. It'll escalate costs and create public health harms for longer periods of time when people have been burdened by this for too long already. We'd like to have some clarity around, there were some provisions around mapping leaks and other things. We'd like some clarity about then moving from funding to repair to avoid costly emergency repairs as opposed to scheduled repairs, which is much more effective and much more cost-saving, less disruptive to communities, and less destructive to homes. The other is that there should be early and advanced warnings if there is going to be floods and raw discharge is going to happen, whether it's before the permits and the remedies are achieved and beyond. This is going to happen, and so people should get some early warning. As was mentioned before, except for Ridgefield Park, climate doesn't seem to be something that's considered in these permits, and adjustments should be made as required as conditions change in the future. And how are we going to accommodate that? Also, you know, we've had, we've worked a lot on lead service lines and, you know, doing simultaneous repairs, or in this case, green and gray at the same time, would be more efficient and more cost-saving and less disruptive, again, to communities as you're, you know, digging up neighborhood streets and the like. So it wasn't obvious that that was part of the plan. The other is that, obviously, the DEP will be overseeing these permits to obviously the, the DEP will be overseeing these permits to, to a certain degree. But I think some more clarity as to the role that the DEP is going to play with inspection and enforcement and ensuring the maintenance of the green and gray infrastructure would be critical. You know, you don't just put in the system and kind of walk away. So that's important. There's been a lot of mention about making sure that the public has access to the process, to, to discussions, to documents, transparency about that, whether it's, you know, access to meetings through phone, virtual, Facebook, website, you know, in person, going to the library to get access to documents. If there's needs for translations, all of those are things that are, should be ongoing, not just in certain stages. As was mentioned, the name supplemental team is, I mean, what the heck is that, you know? So giving it a name that people understand what it, the name reflects the responsibility of it, of this team. Have regular meetings, as was mentioned, during the downtimes, which should be really not a downtime, it should be just other work that's done. And what that work is and having transparency, having contact names, information about who the members are and who they represent, include impacted public members, not just public officials. Public officials, yes, they do represent the municipality, but they're there with a very different point of view than somebody who would be from a community group or, or from an impacted neighborhood. So, you know, more accountability and mechanisms in that regard. And then on the, the, another aspect of cost-effective issues is that, you know, like many things, innovations come on an ongoing basis. And so cost does normally go up over time. So doing something efficiently, quickly, you know, with a multiplier benefit by doing gray and green at the same time, or other utility work at the same time will, will bring down costs. We know, we've seen this with lead service lines where they've done, you know, a whole street or, or they've done other things at the same time. So that's important to do. But we also know that when innovation comes, you want to be able to take advantage of those opportunities of innovation. So how do we allow for making sure that the process and the permits are enforced and that we get our best and maximum result and benefit in the fastest time by doing all of those things together? And if there isn't innovation, how do we accommodate that? And then I guess the last thing I'd like to say is that something, again, I'm using the example of lead service lines. Where Newark, they actually trained people in the city of Newark to supplement the, the contractors. And they added 60 new people from the community who were trained to work side by side to do the lead service line replacement. It allowed the city to replace lead service lines at a accelerated pace. And no other city in the nation replaced 22,000 lead service lines in less than three years. And it was in part by having a jobs training program. So I would just say it's not just, this comment is not just to this permit, but there's a lot of work to be done. And there's a lot of people who would like to be part of, of making our waters cleaner, our neighborhoods less flooded with less sewage in them. And these are good family supporting jobs and would encourage the department. I know it is doing it in other areas, but to consider it in this area as well. And thank you for your time and, and the other good work that the department and the, you know, the permit holders are trying to, to move forward and do the right, to right thing here. But we need to move faster with more people. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We've had four people provide testimony so far. I don't see any new names. Is there anyone else beyond those first four who would like to speak? If you would, please put your name and your association and your email address in the chat and then we'll, I'll call on you. All right, I'm not seeing anyone new. Is there anyone who has already provided testimony, would like to provide additional testimony at this time? If you would, please just put your name in the chat again, please. All right, I see Suzanne Atman, you have the floor.
Great, thank you so much. Just a quick note, based on some of Amy's testimony. It, it actually, from a green infrastructure standpoint, it does not seem that there has, there's many meaningful green infrastructure projects being considered. You know, meaningful, meaning projects that really capture a great deal of volume. So hoping that, that is, is being evaluated. And to Amy's point, with so many gray infrastructure projects being implemented, whether it's for CSOs or lead service lines or other, has the permit holder evaluated these opportunities to achieve economies of scale? One specific opportunity in Ridgefield Park to include green infrastructure to consider is while building the Valley Road. It looks like they're going to be reconstructing Valley Road while separating the sewer system there. That's a great opportunity to look at green infrastructure and how that can be built, a meaningful green infrastructure can be built and, and built into the process, into the design. And even an opportunity to develop a complete green streets plan for that area, right? As a way to reduce the flow while embedding these effective nature-based and related solutions. So encourage you all. So that's great that there's an opportunity for that and hope that you can consider that moving forward. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any new names. If someone else would like to comment or comment again, please put your name in the chat. I'm going to give it till about 11:05, so another three minutes. And we'll wait and then we'll check in again at 11:05. All right, it's 11:05. Does anyone else have any comments they would like to make at this time? If not, I will close the, the hearing formally. Okay, well, let me be clear. We are receiving comments and the public comment period is open until November 13th at 11:59 PM. That's just about, about four weeks from now. Also, we will be meeting tonight and from six to eight or until testimony ends. So if you have another opportunity and you'd like to come to the evening session, please feel free to do so. All right, the hearing is officially closed and I can get back to my office phones that keep ringing. So thank you, everyone. Have a good day.